Please, we would use our space flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Keller, lead us there, please.
All your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gifts that you bestow upon us. We pray that you watch over this council as, as we continue to plan for the future of this community, that you can guide us in our decision-making and allow us to, to do things that are pleasing to you. Your name, prayer.
All right, um, reading approval of the minutes from September seventh.
Motion to forego the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented.
Okay, motion by Keller, second. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Need changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. Move to approve the agenda. A motion by Stern. Second by Keller. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Engineers report.
Good evening. Um, I won't have that much for you here tonight, but uh, run through a couple of projects. Um, generally with water storage tank, we had a reconstruction meeting at three o'clock today. Um, you recall, um, there's three different contractors, three prime contractors on this job. BN Tanks is building a tank. Tan Construction is doing the water pipeline and utility work, demolition work. And then, uh, BNG Electric is the electrical and mechanical, um, subcontractor that's doing that portion of it. So, completion date is next fall. There's a chance that some of the work will begin this fall. Um, what work that would be is a temporary road getting built, put in, and then some, some foundation and dirt work up there for the tank, just so that it can be ready to go in the springtime. Um, and not worry about having to wait for frost and, and it's, you know, road restrictions in the springtime. So, we're waiting for a schedule from them, but I would say there's better than likely chance that they'll do a little of that work at the end of October. Otherwise, um, what we'll do going forward to this project is we'll hold a weekly construction meeting at nine o'clock in the morning on Tuesdays. It could be five minutes, it could be an hour. General topics will be, um, the work ahead. So we'll ask them to tell us what they plan to do for the week, so that if Public Works needs to do something, Engineering needs to do something, they, they would need to coordinate testing or, or survey, or whatever it is, we'll go through a little agenda each time, so that all three contractors and the city staff is on the same page, and Engineering staff's on the same page, so we don't have to expect the week. It'll be a team's option for that. You can tune in if you'd like. If not, there will be, we'll do grants, we'll do some minutes for that meeting and send them out. Everybody wants to keep track, and then I'll report that monthly meetings, so that everybody knows what's up. So, that's scheduled with that. Um, as far as the, uh, so you guys have, uh, are on a schedule to do some work along the Highway two hundred corridor in twenty twenty-three. If you recall, um, city, uh, maybe eighteen months ago, we submitted a, a grant application. Um, basically, it's a, it's a program where we can ask for upgrades along the highway. Um, on this map, I've got two red dots and some, some yellow dots. Um, we helped to apply for it. You can't see it on there. Black and white, it looks like.
I can.
All right, well, the overwhelming majority of the cost improvements that we've requested DOT do along the highway is an underpass, pedestrian underpass, um, near eighteen, and, uh, some pedestrian trail improvements on the far west side of town. And then there's some lighting improvements to fill in some gaps of, uh, where there's been lighting along two hundred. And the way the program works is that it's an eighty percent federal cost share, ten percent state cost share, and a ten percent local cost share. Um, Monty got some information back here a couple of days ago, saying that this, this west portion of lighting, from here to here, according to their study, it doesn't warrant it, meaning that they'll only pay for fifty percent of that cost of the lighting. Um, sorry.
That's from Ninth Avenue West.
From Ninth Avenue West.
Yeah, from Third Avenue West, basically where the hub is, where we're the Jimmy's, they would do it. It was just from Ninth Avenue West.
I think it's because it's not warranted.
They claimed, they claimed that the land on the north side there, it, it just, there wasn't enough space there to warrant it, but it.
So when we applied, our assumed cost share was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the city. Um, what, you have two options. We can either take out that portion of the lighting from the edge of town to the west, or agree to pay for fifty percent of that portion. And now that I know that, Monty, um, I would say that the cost is between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars of additional cost share.
That's the way for Jimmy's to, our last exit of that project, is probably.
You, yeah, you've signed a cost participation maintenance agreement, saying that your local share is a hundred and eighty. I, I believe, I'm, I'm, I was, I was assuming that this was gonna go up by thirty-five thousand, because I was thinking that it was gonna go from the hub right all the way. But I think now it's only half of that. So, it's your choice. We can either shorten, or not we, the DOT will either shorten the lighting and only go to the edge of, kind of populated area, and leave your cost share the same, or go the full length and, um, raise it up. But they would then, three?
There was a third option. You just took the lighting on the path, basically the pedestrian lighting rather than, and that would still be under the, under the original cost share agreement.
Okay, okay. And I don't have cost share breakdowns for that.
Yeah.
But if they just do the lighting along pedestrian trail there, they would pay for ninety percent of that. So, all in all, it's, if we, if we want them to continue to delighting the full length of the, um, the route, your cost share will go up, I would guess between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. And then they would send you a revised, um, it's called CPMA, Cost Participation Maintenance Agreement, with the revised number percent.
When do we have to make that decision?
Alena is your person with the DOT. I think she is pressing you guys to make a call on that.
Yeah, sooner, sooner than later, because they've been doing a lot of engineering on the project and all sorts of things, so.
So, the third option is to light the path from Jimmy's.
Yeah, basically, it would basically be similar to what we have on the West Hazen Path, and it'd be just those lights right along with the pedestrian path that aren't as high and, and obviously don't illuminate as much, but, but that is the other.
Still had safety for the bike path, it's just not the highway.
Like the path, yeah. But the path doesn't go all the way over to there, and it only goes to twelfth avenue. So it would be stopping there anyway. You wouldn't get to the end of maintenance. But it would do the rest of the path that's intended to go in there.
Okay, well, can we make a decision by the next meeting? Is that soon enough, or?
I don't think she gave you a deadline. She'll just be bugging Monty.
Yeah, she just said, please let her know.
Yeah.
Unless you guys don't make a decision right now, it's fun, I mean. Or else I'd like to see, you know, this cost share, dollar value of one there, so.
That would be good to understand, what, what the hit would be to the city for that segment, if we were to keep that as part of the project without the pedestrian. No, without the, the original funding.
Yeah. It's in, I don't have it in front of me, but it'll, it'll range from one seventy-five to two hundred, is what my guess is, for option A, B, and C. But yes, we'll get you better numbers, and you guys can decide. I might not be at that meeting, but I'll make sure you have.
I'll get a little bit more on it.
Ten four. Um, otherwise, um, I know there's still some corrective work that needs to be done, Expedition Estates subdivision, ongoing. Um, that's all I really have on that. Um, it's just time for some DWSRF and CWSRF questionnaires. What that means is, on an annual basis, Hazen, um, what you do is you get on the intended use plan for improvements for the following year. And that's, the Department of Environmental Quality sends out a questionnaire that the city fills out every single year. And you fill it out, and a lot of times it's formality. We're not intending to do work, but what is happening more so is that the Health Department is telling us that they're probably gonna get some significant amounts of, um, like, grant money this year. So instead of it just being a loan program for next year, they may offer thirty, forty, fifty, seventy-five percent cost share, because they're expecting to get some of this ARPA money. So I don't know, but we will do the questionnaires as always. And you may get notified in January that you're eligible for loan forgiveness, if you do choose to do things. So, for instance, I don't really know what we have you on the list for, if no, if Monty.
I think we just removed him from the list.
Okay.
Water tower.
We don't have any identified projects, but if you'd like to be on the list for something, we, we could place you on the list. For example, you know, water meter replacement, or water main replacement, or, you know, we're pretty much taking care of most of the stuff with this project we're doing right now, but if there's a water main extension or looping that we wanna look at doing, if, those are eligible items.
How about lift station, uh, monitoring?
Yep.
That's something that, that I'd like to see us modernize a little bit more than what we have in there right now.
So the due date for the water ones is in October, and the sewer ones will be next month. And so, I'll, I'll pay more attention to the sewer side of things. I don't know what program, the, one's called the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, the one's the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. I don't think you've even gotten the letters for the clean water ones yet, but that'll be next month.
They're usually, in December is usually when they have to be somewhere in the first week.
Right. So, if there's anything related to water that you wanna be on the intended use plan for, then we'll do it and fill it out and send it in. No obligation, just a questionnaire. So, I think you should probably remain on the list. But I don't have an identified need in town, unless you guys have something that you know.
Unfortunately, the water meters could be an issue in the not-too-distant future, because they aren't making the parts for the ones that we put in many years ago, and they're running out of them, so. It may be something we have to look at in the next couple of years.
Yeah. If I were you guys, what I would do is I would just put, I would just fill out the questionnaire and just have it say water meters, and just pick a dollar amount, like, three hundred thousand bucks, and I mean, it, more than that? Oh geez, okay. How many accounts do you have?
Eleven hundred and fifty.
Okay. So, probably more like six hundred thousand bucks then. And if you can get some cost share, then you guys might decide to do it, or you might not. You know, it's, it's just something that, I think it's a need that's down the road. I don't know, that's what I would do. And I don't need any, I don't need anything appro, well, I'll have to ask Monty to sign it. It's just a questionnaire, but. That's all I got.
All right, two questions for Jared.
Thanks. Thanks, guys. Yep.
All right. Five B. The infamous alley. Quiet title. Monty, bring us up to speed, please.
Well, Cap had spoke at one meeting about how it may be a option for the city to try and file an action to quiet title on that with the errors that go back all of those years. There was some talk about the need for a survey. Is it really necessary, looking at for someone to look at the documents or not, or how the city wants to proceed? Do you wanna file that action? Let legal, let the courts look at it and make a determination? Do we need to worry about the survey?
Aren't, aren't all the survey documents already here? And we have all the numbers and deeds.
Yeah, I mean, we have copies of plots that have been recorded. We have copies of deeds, but nothing on the ground that's shows the exact pin location or location of lot lines on there.
Um, and would that be something that, depending on the outcome from the courts, that a guy, if they determine that it is quiet title, then would a guy be better off setting those pins or re-surveying them to make sure they're where they're supposed to be?
Well, it's always, it's always advantageous to know your boundaries, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that benefits everybody on that alley. In terms of knowing, the only risk is if you lose it. Then, then you've lost ten feet of alley. You've got a ten-foot wide alley.
Time for me again, quiet title.
Quiet title is the legal process of establishing ownership of a parcel of property. And in this instance, it would be done as what we would call a bench trial. There would, there's nobody living that could testify as to any of the documents that created the mistake originally. And so it's just a matter of the court being presented the documents and legal arguments as to why the city should have at least a twenty-foot alley there, and why the original deed was mistaken, current owners have noticed of that mistake. So, those would basically be the city arguments. And the judge, once the judge rules, the opposing party has a sixty-day window to appeal. If they fail to appeal, that's the final outcome.
Do you think it'd be advantageous for us to have a survey note, too? To know all the information possible?
You know, uh, I, I guess, I'm always in favor of the survey to, uh, I mean, apparently this current owner believes he knows what the boundaries are of his property. Uh, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they jive with what a survey would show. If he's off a foot or two, it may not make any difference. If he's off ten feet, makes a huge difference.
Okay. So on this process, dollar-wise, what do you think it's gonna cost?
Well, even a bench trial like that, it'll cost a couple thousand. And then you'll have some fees. You'll, you'll have to do some publications, filing fees.
Survey.
Court costs.
Yeah. I don't know that the survey is really required at any point, but yeah, you could have that cost as well.
Yeah, the survey, I guess, I agree with Monty. It's not necessarily required. It may add to the evidence that the city presents. Because as a bench trial, if you're only submitting documents, you know, that's, that's the end of it. That's all a judge can rule on, is the documents. You could submit affidavits, um, from persons who may have personal knowledge, but I just don't know who those persons would be.
Okay, yeah.
So I would say that if we're gonna spend, you know, like, two grand, or, I mean, it's maybe upwards of, I mean, like, five thousand bucks, I mean, I think that's a benefit to us, too, you know. Only, only as part of the alley, then, yeah. Is that a motion? Sure. Okay, yeah. Thank you. Motion by Stern.
Second that.
Second by Keller. Discussion.
The, the benefit Casey is, uh, the, the access in the alleyway.
Yeah.
To ensure that we can service all of those citizens there, if there were to be some type of catastrophe or something. We needed to run an ambulance or a fire truck or something like that.
And all the property holders.
Consistency.
Too, you know, when they're able to use that alley. Okay, we have motion and second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. You take it from here, then?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll be as late as Monty. We will do some affidavits, because we will get some police and fire people. Garbage people.
Yeah. Is that, that, that's where you all run the garbage truck for, for pickup for those residents?
No, we're on the, we're on the streets or whatever, but I know years past.
If we had access to that alleyway, would that be a better alternative? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
No, not really, no. You're the one who gets it.
All right, six A. Heritage Park Committee update. Gentlemen, come on up if you wish.
I have a drawing and cost of it, uh, no cost to the city, of course, unless, unless we feel like anybody can feel like it. But, uh, and sample of the the rubber ice product, it's a, a rubber mulch. We wanna
Don't use it?
Yeah.
It's, I don't know, it looks like candy.
The, the choice is the terracotta red, which is the reddish brown, what we'd like to put in the park, and a rubberized curb to encompass the, uh, the musical instruments. Um, the border would butt up against the sidewalk, sloped off nicely, so we don't have a trip hazard, and also provide um, handicap access into the, the musical instrument portion of it. But we just thought we should, uh, inform what our, our plans are, and so we've had no surprises on what, uh, we'd like to do to the park. I think it's a great improvement. And actually, probably, Dave's people probably like it, too. Be easier to mow around some of those instruments and whatever. It'll be a nice sweeping curb. It won't be a, uh, strong corners. It'll be a six-inch curb. Um, we're gonna set it into the ground two inches, so you have about four inches of, of the ground. And a three-inch rubberized mat. Or rubberized mulch. So sixty by thirty is gonna, you're using seven thousand dollars. It's, yeah, it's about, oh, sixteen hundred square feet, is what we're just relating out.
And we've reached out to other communities that have used this particular material. North Dakota Wind, we're, we're gonna be okay with that?
And North Dakota, this, uh, reading the, the reviews on it, this is one of the best products you can get. Uh, the company is a five-star rated company.
Okay.
Uh, they give it a twelve-year color warrant, or guarantee. Uh, claim you don't have to re, or add any mulch in that time.
I'll tell you what, when we have the Chalk Fest and the dedication of the instruments, I thought that was just a fantastic event. It has just added so much culture to that area of our community. It's been fantastic. I love it. Appreciate you guys doing this, though. I don't think we have, I, I don't have any objection to you doing this. I'm not sure, yes. Go forth. All right, absolutely. Thank you guys very, very much. When are more instruments going in?
Um, we have, we have two more instruments that are going in. They're arriving in the states. Uh, these are from Great Britain. And they're arriving in the states the seventh, eighth of October, and they generally FedEx them within two days to their freedom. So they'll be here, um, we're kinda discussing whether the rest of this project can get finished this fall. My side doing this, right. We don't wanna cut the swimming pool in there and then suffer.
Yeah, once I place the order, it's a, a six-week leave time, so we'd be pushing across, so we might end up doing the mulching split in next, next spring.
Great, thank you. It's awesome. Six D. Elgripal permit for easy use of wrestling. Move to approve the permit. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Keller. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, takes down eight to the Credit Union's building permit.
Okay, submitted permit, uh, Charvet Custom Homes will be doing the construction for Charvet. Estimated cost is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You can see in the little drawing, this will be the addition on the left-hand side of that drawing. Oops, everything else will stay the same. You'll just cut an opening in where the waiting area is through one of the, one of the former offices. Uh, basically, this comes to you because it is a commercial building permit. There are no variances. There are no other requirements from the city. Permit will cost five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Completed by March of next year, it says.
Yeah, they hope to get it shelved up before winter, so that they can do some of the interior work over the winter.
So this is just for information. We don't need it.
Well, you need to be accurate.
Motion to approve the building permit.
Same motion by Keller. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. Okay. Good to see you guys. Thank you. At this time, we're going to, um, adjourn the regular meeting. And we were gonna open up the public hearing for our budget. And this time we'll take any public comments. Okay, commissioners, any, any comments? All right, then, at this time, we need to finalize the accepting.
Yeah, if there's no other comments, you can close the public hearing and reconvene.
And then make the, 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 yeah, to do business in the hearing. Okay, then we will close the public hearing at this time. And reconvene the regular meeting. And we would need a motion, or whatever we have. We have motion, we need a motion and a second. And take action. Move to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-two budget. Okay, motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Keller, discussion. Thank you, Monty, for putting an awful effort into this process. It's never easy. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, reports. Casey? Dan? Dan?
Norway.
Okay. Buster, you wanna touch base on propane and, and a little bit? Dave, streets?
Waiting for storm.
And leaves are coming down. Are we sweeping sweepers yet?
We're getting, uh, the air sweeper ready and the other one has been going out periodically. We'll be starting probably pretty regular here pretty soon. I'll daily go and I'll be picking up certain areas or whatever.
Okay. Lagoon Road. Norman, you ready to roll for the winter and?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Buster?
Okay, so, couple of things. One is make sure you put some lights out in West Hazen. Whether you put them on the path or put them on the highway, I don't care. But it's dark at four thirty in the morning out there. Very dark, very dark.
When you have your reflective suit on, you're, you just look like the sunshine.
Yeah. And, and then while you're at it, think about putting a light up on my new residence because that's darker than I'll get out as well.
Think there's covenants up there so there's no light?
I'm just glad that you guys took that ring off of the, the man lifter. I thought you'd be tripping over it in the, in the burning sand block. Anyway, so I can talk a little bit about, I've been fairly involved in the Cool Communities discussion, the grant, you know, that we're looking at. And so to give you just a little update in terms of, a lot of things have evolved and changed and, and actually, in some respects, some, there were some surprises that came our way, you know, simply from the bigger picture. And when I say the bigger picture, I'm gonna say the state level, okay? Because there are a lot of communities and entities that are also interested in some of that Build Back Better portion of it. We had a Coconic Emergency Meeting here last Tuesday and Brett Foger, who is with the A two S Engineering, was here, talked some, about some of the plans on a, on a more global basis in terms of where things are at. Visited with the governor, visited with some of those people that, uh, commerce, those kinds of things. So originally, I don't recall if I had talked about one of the tentative plans. Our plan was to see if we could tap into, uh, natural gas over in the Glen Allen areas, Apple River, bring it to Hazen, Dula area, okay? And as a phase one, and eventually a phase two would be extended east and then west from there. Part of what I liked about what Brett had to say at the Cool County Emergency Meeting is he says, I think that Mercer County, that you could, there's a section in there that would allow us to get out, go after that grant on our own, which we will be doing now, okay? We, we made a motion today to hire again a, a grant writer at the MCTD meeting. So hopefully those terms will be able to, we'll get that squared away tomorrow. That individual will be, uh, willing to work under those parameters. And so we, we do have to, we do have to get going on it. There's no question about it. But from the bigger state position, they're looking at trying to put a natural gas line in from, all the way from the Bakken to east, to the eastern part of the state, which is like major, major project in terms of infrastructure and cost. So, uh, some of the grant dollars that they're going to be applying for is going to be for some of that and I'm not sure it's gonna be in terms of a study or whatever. Another opportunity that might be, um, available for us is to possibly look at, uh, maybe tapping into the flaring that is taking place up at Quinbutz in Dunn County in that area and reverse some of that and maybe try to bring it back down. Uh, I'm not sure what, what's gonna happen with that, but that's, that's a piece of discussion that we also had about where things are at. And of course, part of it is, is to bring economic development to our local area. So, uh, there's a lot of, there's still a lot of moving parts to this whole thing. But I feel, I feel pretty good about the fact that we'll be able to at least try to pigeonhole uh, some of that natural gas aspect through a, a piece of that grant that is under the infrastructure. And we're gonna move forward, move forward with that. There's another piece too of it. We talked also about some of the bridges, uh, roads, those kinds of things. There's a separate piece of dollars there that, uh, tourism, like a hundred million going into that. The other thing that we don't know, of course, is, um, out of the federal dollars yet, which hasn't passed, okay? But you know, there's a lot of money that was going to be dedicated to bridges under that program as well, if that gets passed. So I'm not sure how this is all gonna fit into the picture. The big thing about, a couple of things that, October nineteenth is the first deadline date that we have to have certain stuff in, and then March. So, uh, now it's going to be a matter of, you know, trying to get as much information as we can in terms of, um, where we're at with Mercer County. One of the things we wanna look at is, is, uh, you know, uh, you, there's a fifteen year look back. So one of the things we're gonna try to do is see if we can find some information relative to the Stanton Plant closing, the GRE, and how many workers that might have displaced, so we could use that as some of our ammunition. With that at, at the time, and then, you know, some of the other ones. Uh, I think for instance, like, uh, Glen Harold, I think that was too far back. And of course, uh, Indy Head Mine, a ZAP, that was too far back. So we wouldn't even think about going that far back to look at some of that stuff. So, uh, Beaver Brickman over in Dula's been kinda leading the charge and I've been tagging along and helping him, uh, with certain aspects of it. We're gonna try to reach out to the, our regional representative who works out of the Denver office, uh, EDA Denver office. I've talked with him once already. We're gonna try to reach out to him again and, uh, make sure we're going down the right path. We don't wanna be, we don't wanna have too many colds in the fires so that one grant, for instance, might be competing against the other one. You know, that type of thing. And, uh, looking at it from a standpoint of what, what can we do for Mercer County? And the, the thing about it is, is it, it seems like a lot of money available, but you need, we all need to keep in mind that it's a federal program. And so there's lots of communities and areas that are gonna be applying for the same dollars. So we'll just wait and see what happens.
Thank you. Yeah. Questions for Buster?
Talk about bridge enhancements and stuff. What, what, where, where are you seeing that? I'm just curious.
You know, uh, you know, Travis Bride, uh, is the county commissioner and he, he mentioned some of them, but to be honest with you, Dan, I hate to, I hate to say this, but I really didn't listen very closely because I, I felt like it was kind of out of.
You don't have a passion for bridges?
No. Even though, I will say this though, I mean, and the, and a couple of representatives from the water commission, I love the water commission, it's kinda water commission. And there are some projects that they talked about that I think would be feasible, you know? I can't get into a lot of the details with it because I just, I, I don't know enough about that.
Yeah. Couple of projects where it's Spring Creek that would help.
Spring Creek.
Help, um, little flood diversion for the, the ZAP area and then.
Yeah, which that one I thought would be really.
Yeah. Then one up at.
South Shore.
South Shore.
Yeah, the Dula Bay, or is it Dula Bay?
Dakota Waters.
Dakota Waters.
Yeah, then just the last three years.
Yeah.
So, so it's more than bridges. It's, it's flood diversion and things of that nature. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you, Buster.
So then, I'm sorry, sorry, no. I got a, uh, I got a question on the gas line. I know, I guess, five years ago, that project was, I mean, was, I mean, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess, it dropped up here. You know, and then at that time, you know, the roads and stuff would have to be, uh, tore up in order to lay down that line.
Uh, yeah, are you talking in the city?
Yeah, in the city, yeah.
You know, uh, I'm not sure about.
No, it mostly be boarding from the alleys, yeah. Yeah, they're beboarding. Would be very little asphalt being touched, yeah.
So maybe the technology has changed since then that would make it less invasive.
And actually, the price has changed as well. It's actually dropped, what we.
Price of natural gases, yeah.
Yeah, well, just the infrastructure goes on. The steel has gone threefold, but the infrastructure costs come out of Glen Allen is, what they say, per mile?
I think it was about, oh golly, I don't know. He thought it would probably be about a full package of seven million, whereas, whereas before, the discussion was that it would be, uh, two million a mile.
Two million a mile.
Thirty-eight miles, or same, around bigger to forty miles, so. I mean, it dropped considerably. Yeah, if those numbers, we haven't seen those numbers yet from the company that, uh, leaders reached out to.
Yeah, and that company is Dakota Gas.
Dakota Natural Gas.
Dakota Natural Gas, yeah. Who's actually did quite a work, quite a bit of work in the Mayville and Hillsborough area. And those people are very happy with the, the word out of the country. They don't, they are, they're, they're, so.
So, yeah.
Anything else for Buster?
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Ten A, um, Secretary Cross Facility Agreement. They reached out to Monty, wanted to have the City Hall designated as a disaster shelter. Three, any reason why we wouldn't do that?
I was just thinking of.
Somebody from City Hall here to be the.
Our points of contact, I thought first would be the officer on duty with the police department.
Okay.
Myself, or Dave, and somehow the three of us, law enforcement, Dave, and somebody from City Hall.
Okay. You want a motion?
Yeah, we should have a motion if there's, if there's agreement with that.
So, okay, motion by pillar. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Both? Thank you. All right. Ten B. Baseball fundraiser, I think that should be baseball slash softball. Cause it's, I believe it's for both.
No, they're actually only looking at the baseball.
Oh, it's just the baseball, okay, all right.
That was my understanding, but they are looking at Slindy Field too, so I'm not sure. And North Stars Field.
Yeah.
Cause I believe softball had gotten their grant already for the work that they're doing.
Slindy Field is the one that the high school baseball team plays at?
Yes, yeah. The one the softball team is, Moose Miller Field, yeah.
Okay, okay. And North Stars, the one that.
The little one behind Jody Marshall's house, yeah. So they're asking for some, some funding. I know they've got, they've got some specific sponsorship levels. I don't know if we wanna try to fit into one of those levels or just giving, give, give a flat donation, one-time thing or, or not, but, um, as Monty indicated, we do have some funds available, but not for any of those big, those big dollar, um, sponsorship levels. And I think they'd be happy with whatever we can get.
That's great. I guess I was just reading over, that they, you know, a few of the things that they wanna do. Like the sod and stuff, I mean, every time I drive by, I don't know if it's really green or not.
It looks are deceiving. I don't have a, I don't have a dog in the fight, but I know that the looks are deceiving. It does look green, but it's, yeah.
My yard looks green too, but there's no grass.
Yeah, I think they want us to resod the entire infield, not the, not the outfield.
Is it resod or turbot?
I don't know.
There's a combination, infield, turf, outfield, sod. And I, I do know one of the, one of the benefits of having nice fields like that. We did attract the state tournament to town here and that becomes a revenue stream for a lot of the local businesses and the city itself with, in, in the form of sales tax.
And, and in terms of fund availability, you were talking about this being the, the account that's responsible for basically doing some of the types of things that are being done here.
Yeah, it's, it's part of our general fund buildings and grounds. It's where we do have some funds available. Basically, there's still seventeen hundred dollars in the building repairs of the general fund miscellaneous, basically. And then there is twenty-one hundred dollars in our designated building repairs fund for government buildings and grounds. Or you have nine hundred dollars yet in your miscellaneous donations available as well.
None of which we've got earmarked for anything in particular right now.
No, the miscellaneous is, is basically like the post prom, those types of things.
Right, right.
I'd like to see us do something, I guess. It doesn't have to be huge, but it's a vital part of our community. I know that parks give their money to.
I would make a motion for a one-time donation of a thousand dollars.
Change motion by pillar. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and out.
Aye, motion carried. Takes us down to approval of the bills. And Monty gave us a, let me see, here are a couple of things on it. Thank you, Pat. Move to approval of the bills. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller. Over and out.
Aye. Motion carried. You leave it there. Thank you, guys.